Good morning, I declare the meeting of the Finance and Governance Committee number two thousand and twenty five oh eight open. Present members are councillor Madsen, acting mayor councillor Johnic, councillor Doyle, councillor Antonelli, councillor Madden, myself, and in the audience or gallery is councillor Augustine.
And councillor Martin.
Councillor. Oh, and councillor Martin, who's usually sitting there where the meetings are. Thank you. Acknowledgement of country, Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest at this stage on the agenda? No, thank you. Items of business, first item, the item one, the proposed disposal of valuable non-current assets. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No, thank you. Would someone care to move the adoption of the motion, of the recommendation as printed? Moved councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Antonelli, discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against councillor Doyle, all in favour. That's carried unanimously. Item two, the confirmation of the minutes. Someone care to move the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting held on the nineteenth of August two thousand and twenty five? Councillor Madden, seconded councillor Doyle, any discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour against, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item three, this is on officers' reports, it's the amendment of council resolutions for proposed acquisitions of land for Ripley and Fisher Roads upgrades. Is there any questions of the relevant officer? I note councillor Augustine, you've got questions of the officer?
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Relevant officer, thanks. Just name and title please, thank you.
Good morning, Alicia Reek, Property Services Manager.
Councillor Augustine.
Through you, Chair, thank you. I just would like to know with the acquisition of one Scots Road, that that triangle, I just know yesterday I seen that the property was up for sale, so how does that, is there any implications? Is there risk to the project not starting on time? How do we transition, you know, I just want to know the process. Yeah, thank you.
I believe that the sign is not a for sale sign but a coming soon listing, so I'm aware that we will continue to work with the registered owner of that property at the time, and hopefully that will be resolved before it hits the market.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions at all? Thank you. Someone care to move the motion? Moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Johnic, discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour against, it's carried unanimously, just, thank you. Item four, this has been around for a while, the future of the old Tallagalla School at Two Tallagalla, Two Tree Hill Road at Tallagalla. Any questions of the relevant officer? Yes, the relevant, sorry, I didn't realise you had two in a row. Thank you. Just for the record, your name and title again, please.
Sure, good morning, Alicia Reek, Property Services Manager.
Councillor Madden.
Yes, Alicia, just, I'm fine with the recommendation, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. We obviously had extensive public consultation.
Correct.
I don't want you to put a figure on this, but do you hold hope that with the recommendation we will, may have, somebody come forward wishing to take over the lease?
The intent is to try and get it out as wide as we can, and hopefully even possibly get someone that might have funding attached to it. It's an expression of interest, so we would really not really know until it does close, and we can go through and review those.
That's my only question.
Any other questions? Thank you. I don't, not sure if you're going to come back a third time, but we'll see. Discussion, or someone move that the motion be received and adopted? Councillor Madden, seconded councillor Antonelli, discussion?
Perhaps, if anyone else wants to go first. Just the history councillors would be aware that when this matter first came before council, and a recommendation at that time was that we surrendered the lease back to the state government. I suggested that before we do so, before we move forward with the matter, that we have public consultation, and I just wanted to say I'm very pleased with the public consultation that was undertaken by council officers. I'm not surprised by the recommendation, given the report, given the contents of the report that we received. It is a difficult situation, just to explain, it sounds like it's like Russell State School when we say the school. When we say the school, we really mean a teacher's house in one building, and maybe another building to store chairs in or something, but a very small building that is really just one classroom, very small. Since it's been vacant, there's been problems, two air conditioning units were stolen, so the fact that it's vacant causes problems. So I think the sooner we make, somebody starts using it, the better. I think from memory, it requires eighty thousand dollars, some work at the present time, and over the next ten years, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So it does require work for us to keep it, Chair, and I just want to see it be used, and I think the recommendation is totally appropriate, and I hope we do get a response, some expressions of interest.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just one query I had, the report stated the twenty seventh of June, and this is to the CEO, is there any reason that it's taken almost three months to come to committee?
We have to ask the officer.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the query just is, the date of the report at the top of it is the twenty seventh of June, is there any particular reason it's taken almost three months to come to committee?
That is probably a part of our administrative efficiencies, we do committee report drafting when we do all the council briefing sessions as well, and make sure that the briefing session goes well and the process is finalised to then come up to the appropriate committee. So it could be deadlines and that sort of thing, and I'm happy to provide the timeline if we can take that on notice.
I think if I put it differently, the report's been sitting in draft while the consultation process, consideration process etcetera has happened, so it's probably not a true reflection of when you actually started, sorry, not a true reflection of when you actually moved to finalise the report after all of those other processes.
Correct.
So you could have gone back into the report data and updated that date.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
That makes sense.
I'm happy with that, and I think that's a reasonable explanation, but probably that's one critical thing. That doesn't happen very often where the date probably doesn't reflect the date of the final report, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that can be remedied. Oh, just on the heading of the report, and the councillors for the area might be able to advise me, I noticed Tallagalla School is spelt correctly, but the Two Tallagalla, Two Tree Hill Road has got a different spelling for Tallagalla. Is that right, or is that printed wrongly? Type A?
Yes, there is.
I think it's the one that has the E in it?
Yeah, that's right.
From memory?
Oh, well, that's okay, that's fine. All right, thank you again.
Okay.
All right. Would someone care to move the adoption of that motion?
Oh, we did.
Oh, sorry? Did, I think.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I seconded it.
Just that we had the extra question in. Is there any further discussion?
Just one thing.
With indulgence being the second time.
Yeah, just one thing, just one thing, Chair. I expect there will be some members of the community that might be happy with this recommendation. I think there are members of the community with, you know, well-meaning members of the community that may believe that council should keep this asset, but those, those members of the community should bear in mind that, I hate to think when the last time somebody actually used this facility, it could be years. As I recall, the last time it was used was by the local land care group, and it could be up to three years ago. I'm not going to call up the council officer, but just bear in mind, we have a facility that's sat there that we've had to maintain, mow the lawn, you know, fix the plumbing, deal with the analism, all these years, and we're really at the point that somebody that genuinely wants to use the facility does so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour against, that's carried unanimously. Item, we'll take a break shortly because this could go on for a little while. Item five, the conflict of interest for employees' policy review, any questions of the officer required? None, thank you. Someone please care to move the adoption of that motion? Councillor Antonelli, seconded. Councillor Johnic, discussion? Put that motion all in favour against, that's carried unanimously. We'll take a break after this one. Item six, the procurement variation contract for provision of commercial cleaning. Any discussion with the officers required? No. Someone care to move the adoption of that motion, recommendation? Councillor Madden, seconded. Councillor Madsen, discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against, that's carried. I'll move that the meeting be adjourned until ten twenty AM, is there a seconder? Seconder councillor Johnic, discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against, that's carried unanimously. That's closed until ten, ten twenty AM.
Would someone care to move the adoption of the recommendation? Moved. Moved no one? I'll, I'll move it, seconded. Seconded councillor Madden. Discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour. Against, that's carried unanimously. Just noting that councillor Doyle and councillor Madsen are not in the room at the moment. Item eight. Procurement intersection upgrade Ripley Road and Reef Street Flinders View. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Procurement intersection upgrade Ripley Road and Reef Street Flinders View. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Councillor Augustine. Could we just call on the relevant officer please? Thank you. Just your name and title please.
It's Tanya Howan, manager of procurement.
Thank you. Councillor Augustine.
Thank you, through you Chair. It's not anything confidential. I just want to know, we've got the community and other consultation has just got internal stakeholders. I'm just aware that no consultation have been done with our community. I know that, you know, we've been waiting on a lot of things. I just want to know what's going to be the next process. Once all of this is in place, what's the next step to consult with our community?
I'll actually hand over to Pedro.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to do procurement, but yeah, I'll swap over now.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just the name and title, and you heard the question?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Pedro Barasa, construction manager. Yeah, sure. So we have done some probably early engagement with the directly affected residents. We have reached out to them and give them what's planned, what's planned for the future, what are we doing? And we are at the moment in the process of relocating Telstra, so there is presence on the ground. What we're expecting is to have this contractor on board. And once we have the final construction programme and the staging of what are we going to do and how, we will directly engage with those directly affected residents. But not only that, because the proximity to the highway, there is a TMR controlled road, there is some restrictions that are out of sort of our control to an extent. So once we have the contractor secure and on board, then we can start working out staging plans and then based on that we're able to inform timelines and whatnot. So, yeah.
Yeah, great, because it was just yesterday, I got out of the blue an email with that particular resident that's affected by the... Yeah, so I just thought, oh, what are we going, what are we going to be doing with, you know, just so we know. Yep.
So usually with directly affected residents, we, we put our capital programme, capital projects email address, and then we will reach out directly. You know, if there is any need, we will probably reach out. If there's any confusion, we can probably get, you know, survey or whatever questions we need to answer directly on the ground. So that will trigger a side meeting when it's directly affected. But we still use our normal social media and our normal general notifications to go a bit wider, so.
Yeah, I think these two that are directly, they're a little bit, I think social media wouldn't be something that...
Yeah, yeah, no, we will go to directly affected with direct. We will go and brief them on the ground and we will keep our comms team closely, you know, direct contacts and whatnot, so yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Time. Someone care to move the adoption of the recommendation? Moved councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Madden. Discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour. Against, that's carried unanimously. Just note for the record, as the voting can be contained there, that councillor Madsen is not, still not present at the moment. Councillor Doyle voted in that, on that vote for item eight. Item nine. Procurement recommendation to award intelligent traffic system infrastructure, traffic signal maintenance. I had spoken to staff about the, not so much the details of the contract, but just for a very quick overview of how this intelligent traffic system operates. So is the relevant officer here who's assigned to do that? I don't know if there's, even with new councillors and, yeah, the system where traffic lights can be controlled remotely, but I'll allow you to tell us the good story and what we're voting for to have a new tender in relation there to. Just name and title please.
Sonia Gorcheski, manager of works and field services.
Thank you. Yeah, so it just, this is a recommendation for awarding a tender, but just briefly how it operates with the emergency services. We're not talking about school traffic lights, are we, under this?
So under this, we are talking about non-maint, routine and routine maintenance activities for all traffic infrastructure. So that includes the flashing lights and those types of elements. It also, so in terms of the emergency vehicle priority, that's more of a function of a modern traffic management system. So increasingly across the city, we see that function being rolled out in traffic management networks. This contract provides support for the maintenance of that technology where it's adopted.
Right, but not the installation of the...
Under this contract, we will have provision to use the contractor for installation of minor works.
And do you know what percentage or what number of the existing traffic lights do have that system operating?
I don't have the exact number, but happy to find out through the signals team. I do, I am aware that there is some rollout activity in the past and so certainly across our networks, we do have that capability.
And is it only ambulance and fireys who have that system of being able to turn the lights green if they're approaching?
I will confirm for you, I don't have the exact answer.
I've heard different stories that the police sometimes like to have traffic holdups for various reasons.
We will clarify for you.
Yeah. All right, that's, yeah, I remember when this was installed. I think it was a combination of the state emergency system with the same, you know, the data into our system to, to enable this. It's pretty clever technology.
It's very clever technology, certainly from a safety point of view.
Yeah. There, there any other questions on that for people who've sort of experienced it? Yeah, I certainly know you, you're sitting in a line of traffic and the lights have been red. They turn to green for two seconds and then go back to red and you wait another fifteen or twenty seconds and then the emergency vehicle comes through on the side road. Yeah, a lot of people wonder why, oh, look, we only got two seconds, but it's pretty rare, it's a pretty rare event. No further questions?
Through the chair, it sounds like you've got a bad reaction time and you probably shouldn't drag vehicles.
Thank you very much for those kind words. All right, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Would someone care to move the adoption of that recommendation? Councillor Madsen, seconded councillor Antonelli, discussion. Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge this is a long-term sort of project that the community's wanted. So very happy to see that the contract has got to the point anyway that we're going to recommend to the council for the next council meeting. So the appointment, appointment of somebody to get in there and construct the works is certainly welcomed and we'll be happy to see this project completed.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Item ten, the report in the Regulation Advisory Committee, that's the meeting of the 21st of August 2025. Any questions of the relevant officer? No, thank you. Would someone care to move the adoption of that report? Moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Madden. Discussion. Put the motion all in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Item eleven, monthly financial performance report for August 2025. Any questions of the relevant officer? Councillor Johnic, so we call on the relevant officer. Do we have a relevant officer? Okay. I was getting a bit worried. Thank you. Just the name and title please.
Christina Benoye, chief financial officer.
Thank you. Councillor Johnic.
Thank you. Just in relation to the operational triggers that throw the monthly and yearly variances into like over a hundred or two hundred percent, is that mainly due to the federal assistance grant timing? And how are we going to correct that?
So one of the big variances that we have recognised year to date is the four point one million dollar, I guess, early payment of the financial assistance grant that was actually received in June last year. So we had that budgeted to receive this financial year, but it was received in June. So that's the biggest variance that we've recorded year to date. So the plan for us, because we're not certain that we'll receive another advance payment from the financial assistance grant, we will look to make, make a budget amendment for that in February.
Thank you.
That was considered by the local government policy committee and all seventy-seven councils. I believe we're in, you know, the same situation, you know, with the early payment. All right, would someone care to move the adoption of that motion? Moved councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Doyle. Discussion.
Just through the chair, just in relation to that, it obviously is easily explained, but it can look like quite material when you're looking at the first two or three months year to date or, and then yearly totals, because it does, you know, that variance I think is a hundred and thirty-four in revenue and, and over two hundred percent variance in the year-to-date total. So when you just at a glance, it, it stands out, but then it's easily explained.
At the policy executive, they use a little bit more colourful language than that, even though people were happy to get the money early.
Yes, thank you Chair.
Any further discussion? Thank you. I'll put that motion all in favour. Against, that's carried unanimously. The next item, no notice of motion. Thank you. Any matters arising out of today? No questions or general business? None of that, thank you. That concludes the meeting. I'd clear the meeting closed at ten thirty-three. The next meeting will, next committee meeting will open at ten forty-three AM. Thank you.